Good afternoon and welcome to the Town of Reddington Shores Board of Commissioners Special Meeting. Today is Wednesday, June 2nd, 2020 at 4:00 PM. This meeting is conducted in person for the Commission and via Zoom for all the attendees. Please rise for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sheri, could you please call the roll? And could, well. Yeah, could you please call the roll?
Fisher Croft?
Here.
Fisher Blackburn?
Here.
Fisher Kryeski?
Present.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Here.
Mayor Henderson?
I am here. Okay, so for this special meeting today, the first item is approving the budget amendment, the capital improvement from stormwater. Commissioner Kryeski, want to take that?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. As we discussed at the workshop, there are some activities going on with our current vendor, Seminole Septic, and this amendment would allow for us to uncover all the costs that have been projected and presented to us in previous Commission meetings. So on that, I would move to approve the budget amendment for the capital improvement, which would increase the budget from originally fifty thousand to a hundred, two hundred thousand, a hundred, excuse me, fifty thousand to a hundred fifty-six thousand. Um, two hundred thousand, I was right the first time.
One fifty-six.
Sorry.
Oh, I see, okay.
There was an amended sheet that was sent out.
Yeah.
Versus the email.
Got it, thank you.
That was originally sent out, so that's.
So the, the new number is?
The new number is if you go down to engineering and FUDS, right? It's two hundred thousand from fifty thousand.
And it's moving a hundred and fifty-six thousand from stormwater reserves?
The mechanics of that, I'd have to ask for Mary how she handled that.
Yeah, that's it.
Yeah, but I think that's, you're exactly right.
Okay, I think there's a resolution that attaches to this.
Yes, and there is a resolution, I'm sorry, should I have read that first?
Just the title maybe.
Okay, and referenced it, Michael?
Yeah.
Thank you, sir. All right, so let me get to the resolution.
You just read it by title?
No, I can't find. Okay, so in moving for the amendment to the budget, I would move to, we pass Resolution 06-21, Resolution of Town of Reddington Shores, Florida, Amending the 2020-21 Annual Fiscal Year CIP, CIF Fund Budget, Capital Improvement Fund Budget.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion?
I, I really appreciate the work you're doing on the, on the stormwater system, and that work needs to be absolutely done. It's an important thing to the residents to make sure that we, that we do that as quickly as possible, we not delay it for another year in.
Certainly ahead of.
Do it ahead of the storm.
We, we would be remiss in our responsibility if we didn't do this.
Yep.
And just so, I've been, even though we postponed any activity, I did have a conversation as late as about eleven o'clock this morning with Todd from Seminole Septic, and the tides are really not with us for the rest of this week. I mean, it would have been, you know, a couple days this week. Right now, we're planning to start, assuming that this was passed, I didn't make any commitments. Now that we've passed it, I will go back and confirm with him, but it's gonna try to start on Monday, assuming all, all the weather's right. And I think he said Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, it looks like we can get more work going, so.
Great. Sheri, will you please see if any attendees wish to speak on this matter?
Can I ask them to raise their hand?
Yes, if any attendees care to speak on this matter in front of us at the Town Budget Amendment, please raise your hand, and Sheri will give you three minutes.
Do we have any attendees?
We have three.
We have three attendees?
And they don't see any hands raised.
No hands raised, okay. Sheri, I'm gonna give you a second to run back over so you can call the roll. You have to wear different hats? All right, now Sheri, would you please call the roll?
Fisher Croft?
Yes.
Fisher Blackburn?
Yes.
Fisher Kryeski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
And Mayor Henderson?
Yes. Thank you, Mary Sheri. Okay, the second item is the Town Administrator Position Possibility. So I actually kind of brought this forward, but I'm sure you all kind of have read all of the memos from Attorney Denhart, from when they tried this before, and it is my understanding that it was not a success at the time. The person that they had hired for this position, I guess, was just not what they had hoped for. They, I think he kind of viewed it as almost like a part-time, little nothing job kind of retirement, just come and go as he pleased, and what we're looking, probably need, is someone, you know, full-time that can just kind of oversee and, and in my opinion, I think, you know, our roles as commissioners, we're getting a little bit too involved. I think we, it would kind of be nice to have somebody that can do all the executive administrative kind of things and, and take some of that away from us off of our plates a little bit. So that just seems like maybe Mary would be having a better time in life if she had a little help in that department as well. I'd love to hear any of your thoughts on it.
So the, is this akin to a city manager, except for a town?
Um, no. It's a little different in as much, I guess, usually a town manager actually has the ability for hiring and firing and whatnot. This still gives the authority for everything to the Commission, this town administrative position, but if we actually.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, if we're actually going to have a town manager, we'd have to do a charter, amend the charter, go for referendum, those type of things, because that would be changing our government, kind of, how it was, how it would operate. I mean, we could do that.
Right.
For sure.
What would the change of command look like then with the town administrator?
He or she would basically be, I guess, top dog almost. Now, I hate to use that kind of terminology, but basically, they would oversee pretty much everything.
So, okay.
So if we had, you know, if we had an RFP to put out, we wouldn't be the ones physically writing it, or physically trying to make sure that everything was right, we, you know, have that. And I was talking to Attorney Denhart, and he thinks, actually, he's on board with this, and he thinks we would probably be well-served to have some educational and government experience and training managerial, and he thought it would be an excellent idea to have someone that either understands zoning, because we have just recently found out that a building official cannot help us in the zoning department at all, just very recently found this out. So he said, "It would be nice if your person that you hired actually either had that experience or could readily attain that kind of certification to be able to understand the zoning thing." And that person also may be able to answer a lot of the questions that we go to the attorney for.
Oh.
I mean, and he, he brought that up, and you know, it was actually brought to my attention that, that because we are so involved as a Commission, the sunshine law makes it very difficult for us to really do anything other than, you know, completely autonomous, and if you had, you know, a town administrator, you could actually go to that town administrator, you know, you would still be the liaison for, you know, your oversight area, but that administrator, you know, could, one-on-one with you without breaking sunshine law, so you'd be able to have that sounding board also, and it would free up Mary to be able to be the town clerk. Like, she kind of plays both roles right now, and it's a little excessive to me to ask someone to do both things, just like today with this meeting, having Sheri be Mary and Mary, you know, it's just a, a lot for, you know, we're very busy here, that's for sure. So, you know, I'm giving it a lot of thought, and I've talked to Mary about it, and, you know, just I think hiring the right person would, would be the biggest thing that we need to, you know, make sure we do this time.
Would the Florida League of Cities be a help to us in this, or not?
I'm really not sure. They might have resources, they might know, they might have a link or have resources to where they might find candidates.
Candidates, or?
I do know there are a couple people that are retired city managers that may be interested, but they only want part-time, and I don't believe that's really what we're looking for.
No.
But, you know, you're gonna, we're gonna have to pay, there's no two ways about it. I mean, McDonald's is paying, you know, fifteen dollars an hour, Target's for their first time sixteen-year-olds paying fifteen dollars an hour, so understand, we are, it's not gonna be, you know, an expensive thing, but I do think it's going to be, you know, a wise investment.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to, I, I thought I saw somewhere in here there was a range of forty to sixty.
Oh, it's gotta be.
Oh, no, 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 that was, that was twenty years ago.
And when I saw that, I wasn't quite sure, are we using that as a reference point?
Oh, no, no, no.
Based on the, what I read here, I said, if we can get somebody for that kind of money, let's sign him or her up, I'm all for that.
Oh, yeah, no, we, we would have no one, no one coming in for that, for that kind of responsibility.
So, since this didn't necessarily work out before, so we would be sending it, would the HR committee come up with a new job description, or?
I'm not sure.
Or would we just approve one?
I, I think we would have to probably work with Attorney Denhart a little bit and Mary, and figure out, you know, exactly what the job description, but it's, I mean, they have the old one in here, if you wanna look at it, and have you looked at it at all to see?
I can answer, yeah.
I, you know, it's pretty. I did speak with the, the Town of Beller Bluffs, because they have exactly our form of government, a weak, a weak mayor position with the commissioners, and they, they initiated the position in 2018, and so they had a great job description.
Oh, okay.
A great job.
Okay.
Anyway, I spoke to the person who holds the position today, and I asked her what was the main advantage, and she said, literally, getting things done.
No kidding.
She said, "When you have to go through your commission," and really, Mary Beth, you hit it, with the sunshine law, we can't speak about it, so we have a workshop about it, then we have another meeting about it, then we have resolutions, etc. It takes so long for us to do things, that's number one. And then number two was, she felt she had a pulse of the community, and she really was able to respond to community needs and bring forward to the Commission.
This, this administrator position had a pulse, okay, got it.
And then bring forward to the Commission improvements and plans and initiatives. And to me, I think that's also great, but I can also tell you, and I think we all have these stories.
Wait, can you give me the example of stuff that she brought, so then she would, okay, let me ask you if this is what your, this would do, would be if, let's say, the Parks and Rec or Public Works, let's say Public Works, let's say this person sees, "Oh, we didn't put the flags out this year for Memorial Day, so let's make up a calendar of things that Public Works has to do every year, put up the Christmas decorations, take down the, you know, which things."
It would be a more organized, orderly fashion of government. It gets, it, it actually has a really effective plan, yeah, yeah. We really, we have, I think, have been sorely understaffed in our, in, in our town, and I think it's been a disservice at this point to all of us, the citizens and, and the Commission. I know. We are, I think we are seriously overworked, just as a Commission, I mean, I know, we're all, everybody in all the other towns laugh at us, they're like, "You actually do anything? You do things?" We are the only town, when, when I spoke to this person, she said, "Oh, yes, we know Reddington Shores well." She said, "You're the only town up and down the coast that the commissioners perform the roles that they perform."
Wow.
So, I mean, I spend at least forty hours a week physically here, you know, physically here, and, you know, I mean, I think we all have.
And when I don't, I feel it.
Yes, but, you know, I, I just think it's a very important and necessary thing. I think that it's important that when we organize the job and advertise it, that as commissioners, we do have areas of responsibility which are in our, I guess, are, are very core, you know, I mean, so we, our charter, so we can't really change that. I mean, so the, the building administrator, or the administrator would, would actually, we would still be in touch with them as far as Parks and Rec, as far as finance and stores, whatever, and we would still be their conduit, but then they would be able to take action and really make things happen, where, you know, we have other things to do, and we're making these things happen. It would be, I think, a much more effective form of government. That's just my opinion. Michael, did you have anything you would like to add, or?
Yeah, I, I, I think that everything that, that everyone is saying is, is, I, I agree with. I think, you know, it, this, this Commission has got into the business of supervising employees, and we should be out of that business altogether, that's not our job, that's not the role of a commissioner. I think you do need an administrator to, to take charge, but frankly, I'm not, I think that's a good start, but I, I don't think that's the only, the only position that we need to look at. I would, I would look at bringing someone on and giving them some, some time to understand the, the town, use their own experience, and come back to us with some other, with some other, other proposals. I, one of the things that you said, Mayor, was the, the problems that they had before was they didn't hire the right person, I think that is absolutely critical. If we hire another person that just takes up space and we continue to do the things that we've, that we've done, we've made a, we've made a huge mistake, we can't do that, so we've got to hire the right person. I spent a lot of time with the, with the position description, I think there's a couple of minor little tweaks, but I think it's basically in pretty good, pretty good shape where that's concerned.
Bill, did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, I, I think send to put it, she was being, I guess, modest. I know every time I drive up and down the boulevard, I feel guilty, because I see Sin 's car in the parking lot, whether it's ten o'clock in the morning or four, five o'clock at night, and myself too, I feel like to some extent, with the sewers and the sewer and the stormwater stuff, I mean, going out there at seven o'clock in the morning with the guys, with the trucks, and phone calls at late at night, including this past weekend.
Well, yeah, I mean.
Commissioner and I are out at nine thirty, nine o'clock at night on a Sunday night in the neighborhood, I mean, so I'm not saying that we, we're not gonna do this, or we're gonna step back.
Right.
But I would, I would definitely agree that, at least for me, anyway.
Right, well, like yesterday, the trash did not get picked up, people put their trash out, it did not get picked up, you know, who dealt with that yesterday? You know? So, those are just kind of things that it would be nice, and I think it would be effective to have someone in that position. And, and just, and just, you know, like, the city of Beller Bluffs does not have the sewer system, and they do not have the building department. They have, they do do some, a first blush of purring, but they don't even have those, those responsibilities.
And they have an administrator, okay.
Yeah, so.
So it would be like, so this person would be, let me see if I have the straight, let's say the trash doesn't get picked up, so the city admin, if we had an administrator.
If somebody called me and said, "Hey, what's going on with the trash?", I'd make, you know, one call, I mean, I called Mary, Mary handled it, took care of it, we went back and forth, but.
Right.
You know, here's the thing, maybe we should, ahead of time, make sure that it's a holiday, make certain that we understand that Waste Connections is coming, because otherwise, that town administrator, instead of me sending out all the emails, that town administrator could have said, "Hey, trash is not gonna be picked up, it's not gonna be picked up until Tuesday," or whatever it is, just those kinds of things.
He or she could have put it on.
Everything.
Facebook.
Right.
Next door, maybe.
Yeah, I mean, I just.
People didn't understand.
Emails to us.
No, it, actually, they were supposed to pick up, Michael, it's in our contract, they just didn't do it, but, so.
They were supposed to pick up.
They were supposed to, they were, and they got their contracts confused, but. Would, would we have more discussion, like, with regard to the job descriptions?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I think this is just a vote that we want to, that's, that's what, we want a consensus to have this position created, basically, so that's what I'm looking for, is that, so we can go ahead, I didn't want to just do it at a workshop and then have Jim do something and say, "Ah, no, we're not doing it." This is like, we're voting, we're definitely gonna go this way with the position, the details will be worked out, and we'll vote on those, but this is just, you know, confirmation that that's where we're going, for sure.
Then I make a motion that we create the position of Town Administrator for the Town of Reddington Shores.
I'll second it.
Motion and a second, any further discussion with Michael? Sheri, Mary? If you have any attendees out there that would like to speak on this subject, Sheri Mary is coming to give you three minutes, please raise your hand.
Okay, so we have three attendees. And? Nobody's raising their hand.
Okay, nobody's raised their hand. Nope, no one, no hands raised, okay. And nobody else has any other?
Good, thank you.
Okay. I'm thankful that you, thanks for bringing this. Well, we'll, we'll definitely have to have an HR meeting and. Yeah. And whatnot, but, anyway. Okay, so Sheri Mary, will you please call the roll?
Fisher Croft?
Yes.
Fisher Blackburn?
Yes.
Fisher Kryeski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Henderson?
Yes, thank you.
So what are the next steps, then?
We, we had this ordinance already, do we?
It was taken, it was in and now.
It was removed, okay.
From what I understand.
Okay.
We can just reinstate it somehow, some way, I'm not sure if we need to.
Might did reword it.
Yeah, might be updated for, since that was the one, though.
Yep.
And we can call a special meeting if we need to, again.
So, so are you gonna, is, you're planning to get with Denhart on that and the other, so you've got the, taking the lead on it?
Yep, I am, and I'm HR committee, so.
Thank you.
I'll do that.
Thank you, that's just all I wanted to know.
Yeah, okay.
So meanwhile, if we have, want some input on this, who should we send it to?
The Town Administrator, I'm kidding.
Just send it to you?
No, don't send it to me.
Send it to Mary.
See, that's just it, see, there's sunshine law stuff, so, yeah, send it, send it to Mary, please. So, would you say the stuff that I got from Beller Bluffs? You can, I mean, you can distribute it, yeah, to. I think, I mean, what I like about it is 2018, you know, it's, I like, I even have their ordinance changes and everything.
Really?
Do you have their position description?
Yeah, a great, a great position description, I really liked it. I'll just send you the information, and also, you know, if y'all have any interest in calling them and speaking with them directly, but, you know, the only thing that, you know, I, I don't know, I, I just think it will be so helpful, so helpful to me, we, we need it for our town. I agree. Okay, so the third item is Commission Workshop Meeting Times. So, my thought was, it's more of a cost and time-saving thing, we have the meetings at 6:00 PM at night, well, Sheri, we close it for, Sheri has to basically stay till six, and then we have our meeting for however long, so that's, we either pay overtime or comp time, and I, I think the reason was before, if people wanted to come to the meetings and participate, now we do it hybrid, so that if they want to participate, they can be wherever, just be in their car on Zoom and talk and listen and still participate, and I know a lot of towns don't do it in the evenings, they do it in the day, and, you know.
Some of them do their meetings back-to-back, they have the workshop the same day they have them.
Right, I couldn't handle that if we had.
I was gonna say, oh, that's.
You would have to be cut off, Bill.
There you go.
Well, yeah, but no, there's, I, I mean, does anybody, just, do you want to keep it at six o'clock?
I do not want to keep it at six o'clock.
Here's the problem, I remember when I was campaigning and hearing from people that really would have wanted to be more involved and wanted to attend, but they couldn't because the Commission meetings were at six, and at six, this guy was still commuting home from his job, and so he had to miss the meetings. Now, and I think that's also, may well be a reason why our meetings were better attended, was because we had Zoom, so people who were, could at least listen in their car or wherever they were, could at least monitor the meeting, listen in.
You can just, on Zoom even, you can participate, talk.
I know, but if it's, but if it's four in the afternoon like this, I mean, that just precludes a lot of people from being able to do this, except for the fact maybe that at least they'll be, please tell me they'll continue to be recorded.
If we're doing Zoom, yes, absolutely.
Like camera-recorded.
I, I don't know that we're changing that, but.
That's my issue with it, is that you just, you just preclude people that would otherwise want to be involved and, you know, want to attend.
We used to have it at seven o'clock, we had nobody come.
Have a say.
Oh, really? We had it at seven when I first started.
Really?
My husband was here, pretty much, audience was empty, Wayne Ayers was here, he's probably on there now, but.
Yeah.
Those were, it was Wayne and Chris, pretty much for the most part, and Kenny, Kenny's corner, Kenny would come, and that is pretty much our level of info, we have so much more, no matter when we have anything.
What time are y'all thinking about?
I don't, I wasn't thinking the time, I'm just thinking, you know, it's, it's, we're holding our employees almost hostage until, you know, eight o'clock at night.
But they leave at four, so.
Not really, they have to be here.
No, but I mean, typically.
Yeah, but if, but no, like, Sheri's not worth Sheri going home, or Mary going home to come back an hour, because they have to be here before the meeting starts.
Right.
Yes, but I'm, I mean, it would just be nice to have it so that we're not having our.
I think we just settled it, it's not gonna be at 4:30, Mary just walked in the room.
Are you thinking three, four, five?
I, I mean, I would like for it to be during, like, hours, so that we didn't have to do.
I was thinking two.
Yeah, I mean.
You know, seriously, you know, this is, this is one of those things that we can, that, there's, there's no rule that says that we can't set a meeting, our next meeting at two o'clock, I mean, we set the meeting every, every month, and we put out a notice every month, I'm willing to try it, you know, earlier and see what sort of response, and see what sort of an issue we, we have with it.
You guys, if we set it at twelve noon, then people who wanted to attend via Zoom on their lunch break could.
Perfect.
What do you guys think?
I'm okay.
That solves.
I mean, the County Commission holds their meetings during the daytime, you know, during normal business hours, and most everybody does, yes.
What'd you say, Bill?
No, I said, I'm, I'm not, I'm not, I don't have any.
I don't have any real specific time during the day, I'm pretty much wide open.
Okay.
To whenever you want to have it, I mean, I, but I would agree, I mean, a lot of the meetings, stuff that I attend, we, we go to meetings, big Cs at nine, you know.
In the nine in the morning, but.
So, and I think there are some Commissions or towns that have meetings earlier in the afternoon.
Eleven o'clock, two o'clock, yes, they do.
So, I don't think we're too much out aligned with what's happening.
Doing Zoom, and I don't know how long it's gonna be this way, you guys may vote to just continue Zooming.
I kind of like the idea, if we're gonna change this to continue at least to Zoom for a while, to see what happens, because that'll give some idea too.
I think it's very good to do it.
Yeah, and if there are people who are attending the meetings on Zoom, and it's, you know, it's pretty robust, or would be consistent, then we got the answer.
Oh, Mary, Mary has her hand raised, are you in the audience?
Realize something.
What?
There may be something when it comes to public hearings that we'll have to check for certain types of public hearings, where they have to be after a certain time.
Definitely our budgets have to be after five.
Okay.
But, just because of quasi judicial.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, the Commission and workshop meetings, that's really all we're dealing with right now, so.
Sometimes you might have a quasi hearing on the Commission agenda that we would have to change that.
And that'd be fine.
Yeah.
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 So, Mary, then, what are you guys' suggestions for time-wise? I mean, do.
Twelve noon?
That might be kind of a hard time, I don't know, it seems like we have a lot of people in the office. Yeah. Well, then you still have overtime, or the time. Yeah, thing to do, but at least you're not wasting two hours from four to six.
I just go back to people that are, that are working full-time jobs that they wanted to attend, two o'clock doesn't help, four o'clock doesn't necessarily, and that rules them out, too.
I think you're gonna have the pros and the cons, the people.
No matter what you do.
That wants that more, more law, so, like, I know there are cities that hold them in during the day, the county, like, Mayor was saying, I mean, that's a big one, so, it might be just some of the try, if we're gonna continue on a hybrid, you know, people will be able to attend, or just maybe watch from wherever they're working at.
Or just put an earpiece in and listen.
Yeah.
You know, and if it's something that they really want to comment on, they can, you know, talk, give them the three minutes.
I could be a tester for a while, but I would let it give it a good.
Yeah.
Sixty months test to people to adjust to it.
And we'll put something out if we go that route. I mean, I'll put Facebook and, uh, I can send out an Everbridge and, you know, whatever. I just don't know what time you guys are thinking.
I think what Michael said might be two, if we try them too early, um, with the phones and being busy in there, because it definitely takes two of us, someone to be able to, um, I'll put, does it take two of them?
Well, she was Mary Sherry, so, I mean, this kind of, I think it works.
Because one of us could be in here and the other one in the front. Of course, we would have to be muted if one of our answering phones.
Tracy is here, she could help.
Yeah, maybe on those days Tracy could stay a little later or come in later and, I don't know.
What day does she hear? What day is Tracy here?
Every day.
Oh, okay, my, okay, got it.
You know, if we move forward, i- as we move forward on this administration, that's another body. So I think we'll be able.
Okay, so you guys just pick a time. Maybe move somebody.
Whatever you, whatever time you pick, I'm gonna go for it. So I'm, I'm not gonna throw out anything, so I'm good.
I already said my opinion.
I, I don't know, it's kind of a hard.
I, I have an.
I'm sensitive to what, what the, the staff is, the staff is saying. About, about, uh, the noon hour being difficult because you've got a lot of people that are coming in during that period of time.
I understand that.
No matter if you have it at nine, ten, eleven, twelve, one, two, the whole day you're still gonna be, you know, okay, we're still gonna probably hear, but the people aren't working at first. So that's just, you know, no matter when you have it during the day. I'm just thinking, staff-wise, it normally is the busiest in the morning and lighter in the afternoon. You know, sometimes.
And, but we also. Tracy here in the morning.
Right.
What do you have to say?
I, I don't like having the meetings at six, but I also know that the public will better be, better able to attend if we have them in the evenings. I, I don't like having them at six, but I really think that we, that we would have more community involvement if we have them at six. So I really, so my, my position would be to keep it the same. And I, and I understand, you know, that for timing and everything, um, but they're two times a month. And, um, you know, I mean, look, it inconveniences me.
Well, we've been getting out at eight thirty.
Well, I, I think that we can maybe look at how we as commissioners can shorten up our reports or our positions and stuff. I, I don't know, I can speak less and stuff.
If, yeah, if not for, for Zoom, I would be insisting on six o'clock, at least.
I, I just know when I.
At four o'clock, so four o'clock, basically, we're kind of used to the fact that the town is closed for walk-in traffic, basically.
But then that doesn't help the staffing.
Well, at least they're here, they're not wasting two hours.
Right, they don't have to like go.
That's true.
Right.
You're still here, go right into the meeting, yeah.
Right, right.
Is it too confusing? Is it? Is it, is it too confusing if we, if we set, uh, commission meetings at one time, workshops at another, or we do something on alternate, on, on alternate months? Something that, something that.
I like that idea.
Gives people an opportunity.
I don't, I, that is a good idea. I think like workshops during the day and then the commission meetings, because, you know, those are decision-making meetings. So that would, that would satisfy me, really.
Right.
I, I.
So are you saying like, do six o'clock for regular commission meetings?
So once a month, we have our commission meetings where the, where our citizens are most likely to attend.
And then have more like a two o'clock for workshops?
Right, during the day.
Two o'clock for workshops and four o'clock for regular meetings?
Or later for regular meetings?
Uh, oh, and four o'clock for regular?
If it's.
I mean, why don't we just wait and see how it happens?
Hey, why don't we, why don't we do this? Why don't we try the workshops and change the workshop hours and see how that goes? And if we get feedback with that? And then alter the, um, the commission meetings if we see fit after that.
So keep going at six o'clock for the regular commission meetings?
But that's just my, you know.
But for now, just change.
You guys, you know.
Workshops. What, guys, what?
Oh.
Oh, those guys.
Oh, no, we're, we're saying.
I hear those going.
If the town administrative position evolves, the town administrator's sudden.
I love you guys.
But I'm, I'm willing to, you know, go with whatever y'all.
I think just because we're having it via Zoom and unlike, even though years ago, when I first started here, we videotaped, but there was no way for the public to actually interact. They couldn't call during a meeting. Now we have that option. So if it's something that people are passionate about, they're gonna find a way to, at four o'clock or whatever time it is, to join us via Zoom, in person, call on the phone, whatever it is. I, I believe that they have access to us.
So, so the other thing is, is we also know when we've got some controversial item where, where, not necessarily controversial, but something where we have high interest.
High passion.
We have a lot of, a lot of the community that, that wants to speak on it. You know, we know what those are. There's nothing that says that we can't hold a, uh, an evening meeting when we schedule that, that meeting. There's nothing that says we have to do these the same time every, every month. I mean, we just.
Resolution we just passed for the meeting procedures establishes the times. So we would have to amend that resolution to say something where we can deviate from them times if needed or something.
Oh, yeah.
Just remember that resolution would have to be.
Well, that resol, that resolution speaks to, um.
Regular, special, emergency.
Well, so we're, so we're holding a special meeting at four o'clock now. Does that speak, are we, does this?
That time.
Resolution, huh?
I think that time, it's ba- basically your regular meetings.
Yeah, okay.
When a special meeting or emergency meeting is called, that the time could, really anything, it's your established meeting for your.
Well, I'd like to hold workshops at two o'clock. That's my, my opinion.
I will check.
And I would like, and I would like to try to do, uh, commission meetings earlier unless we have a something that's, you know, high interest, that we just feel to get more attendance.
I think you're, maybe you should go so you don't have to wobble back and forth to a split five o'clock.
There's still one, but.
But not to say, I, I mean, to the residents, oh, wait a minute, this is special to some people, they change the time, you know, and. Where it's not a designated time hold up. I don't know, that's just a thought, but.
I don't know, I just like rolling from closing the door at four to starting our meeting, but that's me. Workshop and other.
For both?
Care, yeah, I, I don't know, I mean, I listen to people all day long, it's not a certain time. I listen to them Sunday, Monday, you name it. Holidays, doesn't have a time.
Yeah.
I know, I did, so, you know, if they want us, they'll get to us, but.
Who wants to make a motion?
Well, we're gonna have to find something out, but I would make a motion that we hold, uh, workshops at, at two PM and commission meetings at four. Unless there's some other issue that would require us to adjust. That's just a general.
Resolution at the next meeting to reflect those times.
Yep.
You can go ahead and do what, you know, you want to do now.
Yeah, so I would, I would schedule.
Be at six, though.
Yeah.
That's our.
That's fine.
Yeah, right.
This month for the workshop.
Right, that's fine.
Right.
So it would start July.
Correct, or the June workshop.